Please order and please let the minutes show that our council is in attendance. And so members of staff and well. Okay, I approve of the agenda.
Council Smith will move to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded, thirdly.
Question has been moved in seconded. Any questions? And now all those in favor of your right hand. Question is carried. I'm for a full of the minutes of our prior meeting.
Council Smith will move that we approve the minutes as presented as well.
Council Prime will second it up.
Question has been moved in second with any person. And now all those in favor of your right hand. Question is carried. Item five, complex of things for the signal. One need to be prior. Here we are. Item six is correspondence and we have a thank you card from Mr. Applebee. Oh, bring it.
Thank you, good.
So just a quick note to thank you for passing the polls on Prince and Thompson Street. Your work and attention to this matter is very much appreciated. Thank you. So thanks very much to all those involved at Public Health Department. Thank you so much for that. It's nice to hear thank yous. Okay, we will move on to item seven, which is our report and we'll begin with Tina Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and County. This is bringing us up to the end of March, things that are really likely to highlight. We've moved into the 21st century and done a 21st payable run. Or by E F T or a direct deposit. So just to give you an idea of what that'll translate into is savings on our post season. So the first E F T we did was 23 checks that we would have been mailing. And so basically we saved $23 and those things will continue on. Nice, easy process for sure. Our group insurance renewal is April 1st. So this was the first renewal that we actually went through. With C A Oak, Stockford and I having a chance to talk to our group insurance providers. And this is the first one that we went through with our own statistics. Because we changed providers in July of 2023. So we had to wait for the first renewal to actually go by in 2024. And so now we stand on our own claims. And we were able to bring a decrease to the town of $205 we got. So that is good news. And hopefully they stay hoping and are able to continue that process. Uh, let's see, our indigenous artwork that we needed in order to finish off our I B A requirements was installed by, and our artist was Natalie Sappier. And so we begun the process of getting our holdback through the components. And that will help us out. We had to fill out some reports today to actually continue that process. So we're expecting our holdback will be released within a couple of weeks. Our 2024 audit, we just received yesterday our second round of questions. So we are heading deep into our audit, which will answer some long-term questions we have on where we stand. With last year moving that whole project into a capital project and how that will affect us for this year if any. So stay tuned for those answers. We're looking forward to putting all of this to bed. Uh, when I look at the actual financial report for the year so far, this is the most expensive part of our year. The first quarter is always the most expensive. So things can look a little scary to begin with for sure. But one thing that if you project forward and continue to do in the rest of the year, what we have done so far, we will be able to accomplish the things that we put in our budget. So it does show right now that we're sitting in a negative balance. But towards doing our transfers to our capital reserves and to our operating reserves that we want to do. But again, we're in the most expensive quarter of the year. And if we repeat this process, we will be able to do that. So that is good news. The complex itself continues to operate in a deficit. But again, we do have dollars that are coming to our holdback being one example that will come in to offset some of that. But again, we're quite finished. There are some bigger dollar items yet to come. With regard to finishing up the facade so that the building is completely finished. That's the largest bill we have yet to come. And our utility operating, of course, looks really good because all our revenue comes in March and most of our revenue is in March. And of course, we only have the first quarter expenses. But again, projecting forward is looking like if things continue as they are, even with some of the problems that Director Robertson has seen so far this year, we are looking that we will be okay. So and again, I will caution that we only are in March. And then when you go forward to our cash portion of our financial statement, you will see a big improvement over the last, but the biggest reason for that is simply because we have received our H S T back for the complex of the largest, like $295,000 was what our outstanding H S T was. So that makes a big difference when that lands back in your bank account. And the other part of it, of course, is our receivables where we've issued our water and sewer bills going to March. So those are the things that bring us back to some of these more normal numbers that we've been seeing last years. That's good news as well. So that's my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions before we send it to the county? Thank you very much. Okay, we will move to item 72. Vic Anderson, I can stop the court stress first.
Folks, as you all seen, we had to thank the other for the gravity. So I'm going to highlight that email report that we have hit the streets that were asked. We continue to full patch and we'll continue for another three to four weeks of people time at the airport plants to be open. Street sweeping that most have seen has started as of today. That'll be an ongoing process probably over the next two to three weeks, depending on how much rain we get. My Dylan report, that's an ongoing thing. I'm back and forth with Dominic and Dylan. Almost appointed daily now, given hours of pumps running, trying to find information on the pumps that were installed at the booster station down in Old Lagoon. That's all. Picking up lots of nice times. Through 18 Main Street, the water dig that we did, as most of you have seen, we have a new fire hydrant down on Main Street. The leak was in the T coming off the main to the hydrant. And the hydrant that was there was a 1951 and we had trouble. It was turned hard and some things. So while we were in digging, we replaced it.
You'd turn hard after 75 years.
I turned hard after 34, so. For properties, green spaces, biggest highlight would be we started our yard maintenance, breaking cleanly. That's going to start cleaning up gardens. That's all started and will be on one process. Top maintenance, like just highlights that we have started long now. So you're, they're complete with the exception of two filters that was seen in the day. So it'll be on tomorrow. Flowers will be all ready to go. And for Dana Ross Community Center, I've met with the fire marshal. We have completed our, what we call our deficiency list with them. So there was a few things, a few fire signatures that weren't tagged. So lighting through the exit lighting, sorry, some that we had to move around, just small problems up there. So that's all been checked off. We still don't have the water supply issues. We still haven't ordered the supply, but we've got back in their good graces by fixing the problems that we could fix. And now we're working with them to fix the other. That's all I have.
Have you been in contact with B T I at all about the opening of the cover bridge and when they expect that will happen?
Not directly, no. Not the, my emails haven't been answered.
Another thing too, a few of our town apartments signs are down. They're, I think the one out in Boover Town is almost all the way down. But most of them, I think, are, that windstorm did a number on them.
Yeah.
The ice plant all shut down. Did you get everything resolved? It's the.
No, so that was, you know, the thing and we have from word from Black McDonald, they're going to stand behind us. The words that he used are, it's three years from now if we go out this Friday.
Yeah, all of it. Last council meeting, I remember you get that. You haven't got that in writing, though.
Oh, yes.
And it's also on the video.
There's a question. When you were searching for the old files and information regarding the list station and the public safety targets.
Not everything yet, no. I'm still. The filing of documents like that, it was not written in the pack. So it's, it's not as easy as just pull in a drawer and bind it up.
You're finding that out, are you?
Oh, I've known for a while now.
That's the one.
Yes, yes. Doing, all I can do is better from here. That's.
I have a couple of questions to add. I may put you on the spot.
No.
The streetlights that we had talked about, I see it says that they'll be installed in the month of April. Has there been any progress on that? Because month ends next week.
So, no, the five of the five lights, the four are up. The last one they need to get out onto the residence lawn to put it up long for, to put it up. And until it dries up, we didn't feel there was any need to tear up a lawn with the street light.
So these aren't the ones in town?
No, these are already.
All right, okay. Yeah, right. And hate to bring this up, but I'm going to put down the radar, maybe in memory of Mike, perhaps, the pool. And the water leaks that we had there. Was there any further work to be done without the summer before it opens?
I will defer that for right now.
Okay.
And explain later.
Any questions?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. The Rock and Road speed signs.
Yes, I have a machine that can dig now, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Item 73 is the report of facilities and operations. And John and I are not with us this evening. I think he's on vacation. So we will leave this with us.
Just a few highlights from John's report. He left you just a quick epic net or new recreation song for booking activities. And utilities too, right? So that's, I think, we're just waiting for the final live date for public, but it's pretty much there now. It seems we are going to test it out. So it's going to be beneficial for us. The planting, we have a moving of our new planting person and have everything signed there. She's ready to go or will be for May 1st. The vending machines, there's a couple of vending machines going in at the new complex. We were able to get that contract as of May 1st and they've also agreed to stipulations of the Dutch and on 70% of the use. He has a note here that the walking track is going to be used by the Hartland Huskies H C S trap team every Tuesday and Thursday after school. So that's nice to see that they'll get some use out of that until school's over. And he has a tentative proposed date for the grand opening for the Dana Ross Community Center of Friday, November 14th or Saturday the 15th. So he just wanted to put that out there for office. Someone had mentioned about.
I told you the application.
Yeah.
Have you or John been in contact with Michael Weeks or Bonnie Chaney?
Uh, we have been meeting with them. Yes, yeah. Tomorrow night.
Any other questions regarding this report?
Yeah, it says Fun Park is going from 24 to 30 participants. Is there a reason that it's only 30? Because it seems like, like, there must be a higher demand than 30. Like, wouldn't there be room for much more kids than that?
There's a staffing where you should consider too.
Yeah.
Right, it's three, I think it's 10 to one. Is it still 10 to one? Has it changed?
I thought it would depend on ages of the children. I think certain age categories have to have certain number of attendings.
Okay.
I have two questions. Do we, and this might not be answered more about with the vending machines inside the phone box. Was there a previous agreement with percentage for all that? In terms of, as soon as chips, I don't know what other product, there was an agreement in place? Okay. Okay, and then the second question relates to the empty trail usage that, I know you've got an update here. But I'd like to kind of hit John's endpoint and some access points. I know I did some research around this with the committee. I'd like to know a bit more about where those points are and what portion or how much of the trail will be designated for the walkers. So I think we're back with some.
We actually have a nice reach out to you on that. We have someone coming first part of May that's working in that looking and it's a planner that's working on the empty trail and possible training or putting A T Vs off on the main highway and by traffic areas for walkers. So we'll have more on that soon. But yeah, I'll mention to John.
Okay, perfect. And is there a portion of the trails washed down below town? Like, I feel there's a bridge.
I don't think so. I know people have been walking down it and I don't know.
The ice is still, if you go down, I was down this weekend, about a kilometer down the trail. You have ice system passable right now, but I was under the impression that further down, there's been a significant washout.
It would be the other side of Racker Creek, because I know that, I know the trail is open clear down below there.
Okay. Thank you. And I agree about to be part of that.
Thank you. We need to, our communications and development.
Good evening, Mayor and Castle.
Evening.
I just wanted to highlight a few of the items that I had in my report to recap on the municipal by election. According to the unofficial results from election M V, George Boone has been elected as candidate for one, too. Congratulations. Nice to have you here this evening as. Pardon me? It's right around me. And so the deadline for the application for recount is April 24th. And so if there is nobody that requests a recount, then elections M V will be able to provide our clerk with the official declaration on April 25th, at which point they'll be able to coordinate the oath of office as far as whether that happens just in the office here as a quick stop by or whether there's a special council meeting scheduled could be before that. But anyway, that will be determined. But they would be able to, he'd be able to take his seat at the council table for the May 13th regular council meeting, presumably. Then I, so under social media, I had noted that I did post an announcement about our new piece of public art, public art rather, which received lots of positive feedback. So it is Pisahuni Ulestup, part of the beautiful Battle Hill River by Natalie Sappier. So if you haven't had a chance to stop into the Dana Ross Community Center, pop by. It's just as you go into the walking track area on the wall on the left. Really nice pop of color there. The newsletter that was distributed by Canada Post April 1st. And there is a PDF on the website, one with all the past newsletters. And copies were also dropped off at the Dana Ross Community Center, the Dr. Walter Chestnut Library. And there's some at the front desk as well, in case anyone didn't get one. Then under grants and funding, we understand we did receive funding from the Woodstock Rotary Week to go towards the automatic external defibrillator, the A E D. So that was wonderful from them. We appreciate that. Our annual application to federal government of Canada, federal government for Canada Day funding was approved at $1,210. So that was an increase from last year. So that's nice. We also were received for $74,000 from R D C to go towards the arena demolition. So that was 50% of that project. So that was great from them. And our application for reconstruction and infrastructure project on the Belt Air project, that was approved at 75%. So right now we are waiting for Belt Air. So Belt Air also had to apply for some funding for their part of the project. And they are waiting to receive their confirmation. So once that comes through, then we can start moving forward. So in R D C, we had a meeting with them this afternoon and they are aware that that is what's holding us up from really moving forward with that. So hopefully we'll have some news on that soon. The housing accelerator fund, we have applied for that in the fall. And we've received confirmation that our application was not successful on that one. And then the downtown waterfront revitalization project, we had requested the Wawa consent letter from the United Baptist Church. So that was the wetland and water force alteration permit application. They required consent letter from all of the landowners that were involved in that project where their land was involved. So the church provided their consent letter. So that was wonderful. And we are now waiting for N P power. That is the last piece of that puzzle. And they are having problems getting the meetings scheduled because there is an absence for personal reasons that the person hasn't been able to attend and they want that person to attend. So, but we are still pushing that and letting them. I love to know today that that is holding us up from being able to move forward with that one. In the meantime, the Glen Group have hired an engineering firm who specialized in water force infrastructure to design breakwater to slow the current, which could be removed during the winter or withstand the ice flows in the spring, whichever. So he is, because that again is something that will be required for this Wawa permit application. They're going to need to know, is it going to affect, is it permanent? You know, how is that going to affect things? So, so that's moving forward in the background as well. And under planning and development, there was one building and development permit issued in the month of March, totaling $250,000 of residential construction. And under tourism and events, the Richard Hatfield sign. So Public Works arranged to have that delivered to A and B Communications. And so they are working at recreating that artwork so that it can be, so that the two sides of that can be repaired. And we're hoping for that to be done and reinstalled by the visitor information center by Victoria on weekend, Victoria on weekend. So hopefully that'll happen. And then the last thing is the website. So that website revamp that's been going on for probably six months or now, so now it has been completed and handed over to us. It's now live. So when you go to tanaapartland.ca, you will see the new, the new look to it. There's a few things that have to be tweaked that I'm working on, going through page by page to get them back up and running and so that the links work and everything. But it looks really great if you have a chance to go there. So Julie and I did training last week on how to update the website content. And yeah, so that's everything from me. Were there any questions?
You mentioned the housing accelerator fund and my record, I think we used a on a website consultant to perform that application. Is there an outstanding fee to the consultant?
No, they had agreed to waive that fee. So typically what they do is there's a fee that's paid. And then if your application is successful, that, that fee actually comes out of the funding that's provided. But we were able to negotiate with them and they said that they would not require the fee. And only if our application was successful, would they take the fee. So since the application was not successful, there was no fee.
Thank you.
And that was the second round of applications. Yes.
Any questions? We will move to item 75, our C A report. Good evening, Stockford. Good evening, I guess, everyone. Everybody always gets to get all the highlights of the good stuff by the time it gets to me that touched all the exciting stuff. But George will be glad to welcome a new councillor to the table, hopefully soon. We did hear a little bit of kind of disheartening news. Moonshine Creek has filed for receivership. So we're losing a, Moonshine Creek, losing a business in the area. Lots of money coming in from the applications. Michelle's been working hard for the term to give us some money for some things. There's been lots of training along the go. Jennifer and I have done our pledge training. I was in on some human rights and H R training and Tina and I went to an asset management training and asset management training.
We had talked at a previous communication about a review of the strategic plan and ensure preference that we wait until our new council is joined. Do we have any update on potential timing to consider that strategic plan reviews?
We haven't set a specific time yet, but it will be sooner than later. Are you thinking May? I'm thinking like mid to late May. I know we have the meetings are, but that was, Tina and I have been reviewing, we've been kind of finishing up. So we've gone over it to see where we're at. So. So I think Charles support was mentioning all the dates. So after May 13th, is that for us? Well, it has been this morning. Okay, it should be Wednesday first. Okay. Any other questions before I see you? There's a perfectly thought here, so yours as well. Did you want this one? And so our interim fire chief, Warren. And so our interim fire chief, uh Laurie, is not here this evening, but it is uh of a support. Do you have any questions? We can get them back to him and answers for you. Let's see again with the with the alliance. Be nice to have some resolution on those issues, wouldn't it?
So oil does say that that is free for the year. Yes, so I had some have been the uh court of development. Uh I've been in the race for the last few days with the transfer through uh they're resolving their problems. Hopefully couldn't see that one much more.
We can move on to item eight, which is regular business. Item eight one, which may require some discussion, uh is in regard to committee review. And so we've had some conversation about whether or not we continue on with some of the committees that we've had. And it's part of council. And there's been, there's thoughts both ways, but in that we um have committee of the whole meetings that we're having this evening, where generally committee issues would be brought forward for the whole of council to discuss. We haven't had a lot of that go on. We've been focused on other um issues and subjects within our meetings. So I think now is time for us to really consider the validity and the usefulness of separate committees. So I will uh leave that to our senior to maybe go a little further with that and maybe just begin this.
Um well, I've just in the short time I've been here, I there have been no committees. It was side of side that I would look at that after I was brought on. Um
Aside from finance and infrastructure?
Yeah, sorry, aside from finance and infrastructure, um which I, you know, I find that very helpful. I did know there's a few things that need responsibilities and some things that need change. So I really think we need to take a close look at the procedural bylaw was at. Um but mine
In regard to finance and infrastructure?
Um yes, and um just some things, just some things, I I feel we need a clear mandate. Some of the responsibilities are actually the CIO responsibilities. So I'm confused on what that is. And also, one of the responsibilities says to that finance and infrastructure chooses infrastructure priorities. And it's my understanding that they would uh advise the whole council on what their idea was and council would choose, not one committee. So I think it's just verbiage, but I do think that should be corrected and changed. Um
I think that is verbiage, the committee and the representatives that have been on it.
Yes, it's just, it's just verbiage, yeah, but it should be corrected just because that's on my charter for that one committee, right? Um I feel that committees slow the process down because right now we have one regular council meeting, one committee of the whole. Nothing can be passed at a committee of the whole. So we're thirty days potentially between regular council meetings for something to be passed with all of our building projects and everything that we have on the go. I feel it would be beneficial for the town if we had changed our committee of the whole to a regular council meeting um and continue with the sport of support, sorry, of the finance and infrastructure committee with that. There's also a couple of other uh things I noted in and the fire by law, there's mention of a public safety committee um to manage or to be there when they have their elections. Um I feel that could just be changed. Currently, it says the CIO and the public safety committee, I think the mayor and the CIO could be there to witness the the election proceedings as far as that goes. We feel having a committee our department probably prefer that better as well. Um and I guess there are another ones that I don't think. Um also, the last one I've had that I've thought we, well, we do need um with spring and the mounting of snow, there's been a take in unsightly and dangerous premises reports. With that, under the unsightly, we, the town is supposed to have an appeal committee. It can be one person, but it can't be anyone on council, um on the CIO or the mayor because that's the committee that has moved forward with the unsightly premises. If it's a matter of cleanup. So if someone comes back after we've gone through the process and appeal that we have to have an appeal person set for them to review and give an unbiased opinion. So
Go down to the public?
It can be a member of the public, yes. It's just one person? It can be as more than one, but really one person is, I think shouldn't it's just someone not to have to review anything. So what's the process to appoint someone? We would just have to kind of reach out to someone to see if it's something they'd be interested in and yeah.
Do we have a clearly document on what involves some criteria, might be?
Um not at this point. I don't think there's anything, but there's, it wouldn't be hard to have that done up because I'm, that's something I've been looking for.
So it can't be anybody that works for the town and or like somebody who works and has to be somebody separate?
It can't be anybody that would have had any dealings with regards to that premises. So council would be the one to say, yes, we're gonna proceed with cleanup or whatever. So we wouldn't want public works because public works could potentially be the one that's going to clean up. So it would have to be someone other than
I I've known of a couple of cases where the the gentleman from the blast truck has given out letters and stuff. I don't think any of that ever came to council. That goes to the CIO, doesn't it, huh?
It does until it comes to the point that they refuse to clean up and then you have to bring it to council for them to decide whether they want, they want the town to proceed with cleanup or and then there's a budget that would need to go along with that.
I think it's also a process that involves the province from a tax base. Well, I've dealt with appeals committees in the past and um I would recommend not a person because I think it'll be hard to find a single person who says, I'll take that possible. Not only on the folders. I think that we should be looking for, you know, we're looking for small, maybe three. At least that, you know, if people are that make a decision, they're voting, they ask somebody to talk to. If it's two to one vote or three, it may be unanimous. I do think that you would have better luck striking many if you had three people that were wise and vicious as opposed to a single person taking
And would it be wise to pick one person from each ward, one, two, and three, if you were gonna do it that way? Have a person from each ward. I think that makes sense. That gives good representation to the KND.
But then is that something that you would reach out to do or?
I I would discuss maybe if anyone had any ideas or about, you know.
Can we say names in in this forum or do you want to wait till close session? Just the people to reach out to that I think would be
Yeah, and maybe just uh at even seeing there's some suggestions as she starts the process. So uh there are some motions there. Um but and generally, that's the way we're having. We put forward a motion and then we would have discussion and perhaps after the discussion, perhaps the motion would change. Um I don't know, but we could at least start that way and
We made motions in this council. We can't make motions tonight, so it doesn't have to be deferred to first meeting in May.
So then you have discussion. What what are your thoughts on?
I thought we already really pretty much decided that when Rob was our CIO, that we were going to get rid of all the committees except for the finance and infrastructure and bring up the committee, you know, talk about the committee problems or issues at this meeting.
I don't think there's ever been a motion to that effect though.
Well, I don't think we decided to abolish committees. I think we at one point talked about revisiting um which committees would serve a better purpose or role considering the number of us on council there is to serve. Um and there certainly some like public safety that we've talked about before. And where are we at? That's whether, you know, we still pursue policing, that we have on EMO procedures and things that have to be considered on all those aspects. Um but I don't think we ever voted on anything.
I don't think we voted, no.
But one of my considerations, I guess, is really about I remember this, the reason why we moved to this structure was to avoid any one council meeting extending to the town of off timeframe because it was uh onerous, I think, on on all of us trying and not really effective in getting things done, which is why we went to the structure that we currently have. So we have to, if we're going to go back to a different structure, I think we have to set some tight parameters in order to make the meeting effective and timely and
Well, I in regard to that, I don't feel that we ever really made that committee of the whole meeting what it was intended to be. I don't think for instance, I don't remember anything specifically being brought up about um, you know, culture, culture and heritage and recreation. I don't recall any of those specific committees coming up with concerns that we have ideas that we had. I don't, I don't think that that happened. So I don't think committee of the whole was as effective as it was intended to be. I think it served like another sort of council meeting where we just didn't pass motions. Um it was, you know, presentation of the reports from our staff and it didn't it didn't take on what it was supposed to. So quite ineffective in that way. And something that our CEO brought up earlier is that a lot of the things that perhaps would come up in those discussions regarding each committee. Some of those responsibilities lie with the CIO and other staff members as opposed to members of council. So I mean, there's that to consider. And do you have any specific examples of that where there's CIO responsibility as opposed to um committee responsibilities?
Well, just the develop and maintain asset management plan or develop resource strategy, maintain public works machine. But that's in my, in the CIO by law, it also states that that's my responsibility to do that. Um
And that's in regard to finance and infrastructure?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I can think of several things from our culture and heritage meetings that we discussed that really at this point have branched out into the hands of other staff members. We can think of the trail management piece, the heart on the green, um candidate celebrations. Uh there's a number of things that either through John's role and and uh and others here in the office that really we fielded those things, but the work has been put into their portfolios. So it does, you know, sort of um negate having meetings over it when someone's working on it every day. By the time we come back to the table for a meeting, we've already, we already have an update on where progress is. So there's a lot of things like that 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 I can think of that we've all had our hands on.
Like for example, the Prince Street issue, it came to a meeting. Um it was deferred to the finance and infrastructure for us to review and before the finance and infrastructure meeting. Jen and I have reached out or tried to reach out to Mr. Appleby, the the hole that been patched. And we received a thank you, you know, before it was ever
But I agree, I agree with the mayor in that the committee of the whole never evolved into what it was intended to be. Whether or not that's justification to get rid of all committees, uh I know historically, traditionally uh you know, at at one period in our town's history, individual members of council had a responsibility or a portfolio, you might say. Things like public works, things like finance, things like EMO, um recreation.
That all falls under the CIO alone.
Yes, a lot of it does. Uh but a lot of municipalities have separate committees for emergency matters. Um in our case, you know, since its inception in nineteen eighty three, I believe the town has always had a representative on Central Carl nursing home board. Major employer, major housing component. We have representative on Western Valley Regional Services Committee. The mayor serves in that capacity. The library and culture has has been but quite an active committee uh recently here. Um finance and infrastructure needs on a regular basis. So because our, just because our committee of the whole meeting didn't turn out the way it may have been intended and um do we do away with committees? Just I see that that's not necessarily, the two may not be as related as
Yeah, I just have, before you do, I have one question in regard to Central Carl Nursing Home. There was someone from the town who served, that I served on the board at the Central Carl Nursing Home, but not in my role as mayor, just as a citizen of the town. Some of them it's just the devil's weapon needed that took their time. Um so I didn't know that that was
I think early on it was, whether or not it's still in place, I don't know.
Okay.
But those are outside committees that someone from town serves on collective set where the finance and infrastructure is our own internal committee. I guess the library committee, is that a town acquainted committee or is that a private separate committee that
EMO used to be as well.
Mm-hmm.
But isn't John doing, John's doing the EMO now, as you know?
Um EMO was part of
He's giving us the reports.
Safety, which is what councillor Michael Walton and you and I were part of. And as I said earlier, it was at one point because of the busyness of the creation of a possible um municipal police force uh or regional police force, that's where all the focus went. EMO went to uh John Magrow and the council, yes, and now you. So it's been passed from John back to CIO. So that's now on the plate of things. Um so
Can I ask why?
Um so I think more of his, his efforts could be concentrated on the facility and his role there. Am I, am I practicing that?
Which is what we see when we publish the application for that job, for that position.
So some of the, some of the responsibilities that were put on him were put on by the um as opposed to what, you know, the original job description failed.
The CIO, the by law and the dog has come to me. So I'm working with Jamie's parish on that and then the EMO. The plan and, you know, that would be addressed at probably once. I mean, the only committee to come from that now is just an actual, an emergent. Not necessarily a committee, but a group of people that will pull together in the event of an emergency. So it will be a operating committee as far as who's gonna man the emergency center, who's gonna help in that. Not necessarily a committee to work on that.
Would that involve membership council? Potentially.
It it could for that because it's, it's just a it's just someone will be in charge, whether it's the mayor or whoever, or the the fire chief, the interim fire chief. And then it's, it's, you know, you're the call person, you're the media person, that's for an emergency type situation.
So I'm not advocating or endorsing one way or the other. I'm really more interested in what council thinks. Is there validity in not having so many inactive, basically committees is what we've had? Um or do we just strengthen those inactive committees and, you know, is there merits of that? Um, or do we just strengthen those inactive committees and, you know, is there merits of that?
The other point I have is just sorry, in our procedural bylaw. There's just a difference, um, governance says. On the F and I that council and mayor approved who was on the committee. Well, according to the procedural bylaw, the C I O is responsible to appoint staff, council members. And council are responsible to others, but not, not the staff. And the other thing is staff members are non-voting. So.
Which is a problem in itself, that you can tell from going to those meetings. I consider staff to be equal, equal participants in all the meetings. Uh, and often certainly they contribute more than I do as chair. But from the government's part of things, it's a matter of how formally want to be within the structure.
And there's also supposed to be minutes down in post, like we don't, I don't know whether that's, I would have to check with other. But all of the committees, any of the committees that we have, there are all sorts to be with.
Yes, one point. So one of the things that we're currently waiting for, and we are in a very busy time here as a town. As a council, as a staff, and we need to be able to move quickly. So right now we are going to ask you. For a special meeting because we have to confront the M C B D. Which only meets at certain times and in order for us. To be able to react to that, we might have to bring you guys back in because we cannot make decisions every two weeks. We can only make decisions every month and some of those decisions take two months. Before you can even implement them. So just from a perspective. I just see that irregardless of of your committees, because you strengthen them, strengthen their reporting. Delaying us in a period will truly need to be able to move quickly.
So that is to endorse perhaps this particular meeting, not be a community of the whole, but being a regular council meeting. Yes, so things can move in a more timely fashion.
One of the things I think about the training structure is this. What? Two or three committees in particular require a lot of attention and detail in our time. Would be one question I'd ask and but if there's more hands to work at, to get it together. We're probably going to get more things accomplished more effectively in a time and manner. And some of the other things that might have been in some portfolios could be ad hoc. Responsibilities associated with individual councils. For example, there's two or three. Groups that I meet with, that I would be needing to meet with, and it wouldn't have to be that it's part of a. A committee per se or that, right, a separate committee for like the library. Part on the green and things like that. I, I, you know, enjoy those things and help and support where I can. But a lot of even things that occur there will really get downloaded to somebody within the. Public Works Department when we actually set up those events and coordinate those events. So. Maybe when we, if we're looking at this, we should look at the perspective of what do we have for development? That requires some extra hands and eyes like, like some of those large initiatives. And that probably work in tandem with the infrastructure committee, finance infrastructure. But maybe there's a way to examine that. And I can think of even with the graveyards and so on. But maybe they don't need to be a separate committee per se, but maybe there's a way to examine that from that lens.
Most of my time on council. We had, always have the active committees. And they always were active. They were all involved. But the thing is, is we had one person, we had a town clerk. And all she did was. Do the wishes of all those committees and council. And I look around and I see you. You, you and you. And there's four people right there that are doing all the jobs that all of those committees that I was used to years ago. You're doing it all, the four people. All you need the council for basically is to bring all that stuff back and us have a motion and approval. So why do you need any committees at all? You've got, you've got to commit your idea. And they're doing, in my opinion, probably a better job than, because they're informed. And they know what, and they know what they're doing.
I must state this, um, I haven't been serving on council here as long as you have. And that's a compliment, by the way. It truly is. I didn't mean it any other way than that. But for the time that I have served. I, aside from the policing committee. I have never been part of a very active committee and I've been serving first of all years on council. So.
I'm going back before that.
Okay, so it's been a, that's why I say your experience is different than mine. Um, there were appointed committees, they were appointed by mayors under whom I served. But they weren't terribly active. So again, I don't always see the validity of. Committees just for the sake of having a committee. If there are capable people who are already doing those jobs.
It's just, it's changed so much. Those committees. I'm going back further than well, were very active. We even had a P A C committee that council was involved in and we did all of our. We did all the planning and advisory and brought it all back to council. But that's all, that's all gone now. That's all, it's all different. And I, I, I'm in agreement with you. I think. Other than the finance committee, I do relate with all the others. We don't, we don't need it because they're doing all of it.
What about in regard to the library? You still want to, you know, serve there, right? You want to be part of that, you want to bring information back.
But that's not really a committee, committee because there's no clerk there keeping minutes. No, they do that. But that mean that's not, uh, it's not open to the public. Is it like, do they put it out to the public, the minutes of the library meetings? And that's supposed to be what happens in committee meetings, correct? So it's not really a committee, that's not offering as a committee of council. But it is a public committee for the library. They would welcome anybody who wanted to attend a meeting and. And engage in the, in the service there.
What I'm saying is it's not really a committee from council because minutes are being kept for the town. You're on it maybe as a representative council, but.
So I'm liaising with them and taking the information back to them and and bringing. Likewise here and referring any of their financial requests to the finance.
And no different than what you do with the River Valley Service Commission.
But you could do that with any. I could, I could meet with the, the, with the trail people to come back and report, hey, I just. The question I have on this. Let's use the example that we're all talking about last week. We have a park that files. So there's an example of in. I don't know how to word this, but it's standing offish, but it's not standing offish. But the direction of the park has been misconcluded or misunderstood, or we, we wishy washy here for a year and a half. We've had these committee, the whole meetings where I don't remember a slide being put up to say, we're going to finalize the park plan today. So there's an example of a committee. That used to meet when, when, when George Boone was a previous council, we had a committee, we'd meet, we'd make changes, we'd talk to council, we'd say this is the rest we're going in, we asked people. So. I disagree a little bit because there's times when you, you have to have a separate meeting with the stakeholders. To allow progress to happen. And this isn't any type of discredit to, to the staff here. It's just that sometimes when you are seeing out donations. Or when you have expertise in the public, such as fishermen or. Or whatever clause may be, you, you need to have some sort of, maybe it's an ad hoc committee for the project, like we did with the arena, that's fine too. But I think that. The, the idea of abolishing separate committees altogether, I'm not so sure I'm totally in favor of that. I think that we all need to take our passions and bring back results because it's awfully easy to sit on our hands.
You think it's two separate issues, the committees on one hand and having two council meetings instead of one committee of the whole?
Correct. I do too. I, I'm okay with having two council meetings, but I'm a little bit. Unclear because, I mean, I tried to before Lord, I don't know the rules of governance like I should after four years, but. If we have two council meetings, can we still have discussions, which we should be able to have discussions. So to me. It's absolutely essential to have a committee, a whole title, a committee, a whole meeting. We have two council meetings. We can vote when we need to vote, we can move the needle when we move the needle. Let's not be scared of having committees that work. Or committees that are needed. I don't care if we call them groups, you can call them whatever you want to call them. But I think that in fairness to you, four or five people, we're here to help. And I don't feel that I can help you if I'm sitting in this seat for four or five hours a month and not privy to what's being discussed. So there's certain elements that, that you, you, you need to draw us in and how you draw us in is you have committees. And that, that's just how I feel on results. And, and I don't want to go back to a time when, when. You're out seven nights a week to clerk meetings. That's not what we're trying to get to. We're not trying to get to that at all, but, but I believe we need to have responsibilities and we need all. We can do more. What, what's the whole saying, those many hands we're tied with?
But if you get rid of the committee title, that means that you could meet as a group, but you wouldn't have to have minutes. You could meet as a group. With whoever wants, you know, on the waterfront revitalization project. But if it's considered a committee. Then procedurally you have to keep minutes and it has to be presented.
And I agree with that project to me is, is merit of the committee. That we're going to spend, I hope we spent some pretty capital funding and it's the start of a bigger project. You know, the park completion might be the start of the downtown project because it all, to me, it all jumbles together. Right? So that merit, maybe having minutes of clerk and. That's just why it seems so.
And that's what I wanted. I wanted, I wanted an open discussion about this so we could come to some conclusions. Do you have something you want to share?
Well, I was just going to say. The idea behind abolishing the committees was there was a list of committees already in effect right now that are not being used. Other than the finance and infrastructure. So my idea of abolish is the current ones that are not being used, that are not actively being worked. We'll be done with those. We'll keep our finances. So that's not to say. If something comes up, like you said, with the park, that we want to do an ad hoc committee. But as far as council appointing a bunch of committees, like tonight if council appointed a park committee. Well, then you have to pick three council members that have to be on that committee. I have to appoint employees or staff to be on the committee. I have to be at that meeting and then is that information going to pass back to here? Like that's, that's where I find there's a huge disconnect. You would have a, you having, um, the ability to go where you and George or you and Tracy to go talk to. John Doe down the road because he's a potential donor for a project we have on the go. Doesn't require a committee. That's just you as a counselor. Having the town's best interest in heart, maybe having a discussion and bringing it back to the table when we do have a fancy.
I just find that somewhat that that's, that's the way the committees used to be. Is, is Jed would come to the, the chair of public works committee if he had a problem. And then that person would take it back if it needed to go to council. And. You're doing, you guys are doing all that now. And I don't, and I just say, that's the reason why the town decided at the time to bring in a C I O to take over all of that because. I, as a councillor, didn't want to be called all the time, or as the mayor, didn't want to be bothered all the time with that stuff. That's why we've got these people in place.
The only concern I had, and you, you nailed it a second ago and you talked with, we had six committees. And every one of us had to be a second on somebody else's committee, right? So really, like, the number of meetings we're trying to hold. With the amount of time you had was insurmountable. And I don't know that it led to any better progress, which is probably why we wanted to examine. When we had our council meetings, we're already having multiple meetings, how do we get things done? So everything we're chasing, it really revolves around what we decide that we're going to take on. As individual members. And I'm reminded that north and south of us, you know, you're looking at twelve or thirteen. Uh, councillors perhaps in some of those, you know, organizations. So. The projects that are going to move the needle of who we are as a community and the. Whether it's tourism driven or financially just, uh, you know, driven. There are things of interest that we know we need to lay our hands to and we read through a list of, of. Projects that we have funding to proceed towards that need decisions and need people working towards. So I do think an evaluation of. What we do for active committees, if you will, or groups are going to meet a little more frequently. That will be probably beneficial. I still think you can take a look at some other areas of interest that we play to our strengths then and say, okay. If it's going to come to fundraising or some initiatives and, and you've got a knack for that and, and connections with the people, then we play to the strength. And if it's the things around the softer side of recreation and culture and heritage and. The arts and all those things and perhaps, you know, myself or Sam or whoever could be involved in all those aspects that we have strengths in as well. Um, because when we look at the finance and infrastructure committee, for example, there are many times we had. Improv few meetings to look at various things from the development of the budget to the strategic plan and on and on and on the list could go. And I mean, you couldn't list all the number of meetings that we had, like, and sometimes in a six week period of time. So if we're overwhelmed and have too many meetings on the go, I don't think we're going to affect council. Moving the needle on too many items, which is, when you reference the park as a great example. It's been two and a half years for me and there are items here that we've never moved the needle on. And we can say that part of it was because we were trying to get the complex up and operational. Um, it's been, you know, that's done and it looks great, but there's always those other things in the background that need attention. So.
I have a question too. Out of all of the reports that we heard tonight, what committee was not touched on? What committee that we would have would not have actually been touched on? All of them are being discussed between all of the different reports we're getting from the treasurer.
Oh, maybe, I mean, aside from my first of, um, public safety, we have to express policing.
Because there hasn't been anything to discuss.
Right. But I'm saying in those cases, like if we were, if we did a, a reported as a committee every meeting. There may be no movement, so there's nothing to discuss, but finance and infrastructure, we know is like very active and very busy.
Well, I think a simple follow-up discussion, I mean, are we in agreement with two council meetings? That's the first thing I think that that's the name of this.
I agree. I feel we should.
Yeah, because we're waiting too long. I think that we should give our C I O, uh, some time to look at the existing committees and we can. Talk about dismantlement of some of them that are irrelevant, uh, within. Let's just keep an open mind for ad hoc committees that we need to push, push windows and. And keep people involved, you know, that's all I ask.
I agree one hundred percent.
That way we can progress.
That's good discussion.
To write new accounts and meetings, which means we're two months away.
When we have our special meeting that I see that we need to have, can we not do it then?
You could do, you could do the first two readings, we're still going to need to do the third reading.
Well, it would just, it would just be a month earlier.
If, 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 uh, the court can now be. Procedural bylaw amendments made, which I think there's more to be made than just that.
Okay, so we can leave that with our C I O? Great, thank you. That was a great discussion.
I see that, uh, one of our guests was kind of wanting to have his two cents put in. Did you still want to say anything to her?
Obviously, somebody has.
Are you, are you on the agenda?
I'm not.
We're putting the sets. I, I do, I would be there. Well, just before you start, just a reminder too, we do have a procedural bylaw that you're limited to ten minutes.
So someone who's in bound to my life and religion or how you stand in the whole week. Which, what you could think of doing is taking. Your breakdown of your different activities, your different competes, consolidate those committees down, and you do organize. Areas of specialty and then pull your traditional meeting that you typically do with all the reports and all the agendas and all the everything else. And come in and focus on just those six core elements. Think of top three issues with that. Review those after a forty. Once you come down to that, you knock down to five to six and then you do a deep dive. For ten, fifteen minutes on each one, preparing your next motions and your review from your discussion, the way they're doing, so you're ready to vote. But that's, but it's not happening.
It, it never functioned the way it was intended.
But if you, the council, if you adjust, if you adjusted your agenda, if you even said, you know, we're not gonna go through all reports, we're not gonna go through each department, we're gonna hit the topics that we need to, but we're, but we're as those. Everyone has three minutes. Discuss each of their committees. You set your priorities, where you're gonna take these six items, and we're gonna deep dive those, or four items. Fifteen minutes each, one hour, while four motions set, prepared to vote on our next meeting.
The only problem with that, that I see is that sometimes you just, it doesn't work to say you've got three minutes or fifteen minutes because maybe there's some passion that needs to be.
That's why you prioritize.
No, but you can, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it takes thirty minutes for one, you're gonna do two more, fifteen minutes, and the next one takes seven minutes, you're only gonna do two. But you get two things done.
This is kind of what we're talking about, but by having regular meetings, we can still do our voting every two weeks. So we can still do that.
But you understand that I do have, you have thirty minutes to tie up and reporting, and then you're gonna report every two weeks. That's thirty minutes lost, like, do you really need?
Well, you know, we would, we would need to report on all those reports every two weeks, because if you did it every two weeks.
Right, so the, the first meeting that we do, the first one of the, uh, councillors give their reports and we, we vote on, um, then we can vote on our motions that have been put forward from discussion from the previous meeting. Um, and oftentimes when councillors give their reports, they're giving updates to the involvement they've had in the midst. And so they're covering that then. Sometimes questions come from that, which spurs on another conversation, which potentially spurs on other motions and that sort of thing. Um, this particular meeting was for staff to give their reports. Now, what we have tried to do, and I think what happened quite well tonight, is that members of staff, um, provide their reports to council, they have a chance to review them, when they come, they just give highlights and we can ask questions based on that. Um, and I think that's worked quite well.
A lot better, yeah.
Uh, it's condensed, I'm surprised we're here this long. We've been moving along pretty good lately.
Some of the reporting, although it seems redundant, maybe even dusk, but we have to realize that these meetings aren't just for this room.
Right.
It's for the people that are tuned in and are reading and watching. So some people that don't, they can take the time to read, I mean, when, when you're highlighting the top two or three things every week, or every two weeks or every month, it's, it's good for the community to be able to see that too.
Oh, yeah, no, traditionally we always did.
But it's been, yeah, it's a lot. Yeah, that's changed with it.
But it's especially for you, like, to wait a month to vote on something when it comes to the finance and infrastructure and stuff, is not working.
So I think, I think we've disagreed, we've come to the agreement that we'd like to have two regular meetings where motions can be passed, voting can be done, um, and you're going to do a review and, and to look at the structure of finance and infrastructure, how it actually functions. And if there's any tweaking that needs to be done, you'll look at that. Um, okay? You good for that stuff?
Thank you.
Um, and item eight two, because I believe that was the end of that day. And eight two is in regard to Prince and Froughton Street, and that was all taken care of, correct? Okay, all right. So there is, um, before we adjourn to close session, our regular council meeting is May thirteenth. Um, so after our discussion, as a result of their discussion this evening, potentially if some things are reviewed and amended, um, as special council meeting, you could do a first and second reading, would you say? Okay, so we may be able to move this on a little quicker than we had first anticipated. So having said that, we do need to, uh, consider a date for a special council meeting. Um, in regard to, uh, whorling, is that correct? And, and swearing in of our new councillor. So what might be a good date for that?
Does it have to be after?
Is there a time in the short term, George, where you're not available?
No.
Yeah.
Maybe eighth is counted.
Maybe eighth is your deadline, so it has to be before that?
Yeah.
May sixth, Tuesday, May? But I'm on day shift, so I couldn't be here till after six, but the fifth and sixth I could do with, with the fifth.
The sixth is the Saturday and the Sunday.
May. Oh, I'm an adult. So it'll be a Monday and a Tuesday either, which I'm afraid.
When does the result become official? Twenty six?
Twenty fourth.
Yes, so the twenty fifth, uh, sorry, the date that person will be needing to turn voting, see the official notice.
April twenty eighth or twenty ninth of April.
Can we, can we do the twenty ninth? Because I can't, Mondays are no good for me anymore because of ball hockey, because I'm drafting Sunday, Monday, Wednesdays.
April twenty ninth.
Well, hang on, I want April thirty first. The twenty ninth is a Tuesday.
At six thirty?
April's, yeah. That's next week. It's next Tuesday, the week from today.
That gives you lots of time, okay? And gives you time.
So April two nine.
That sounds like.
So that's good. So we have set our special council meeting for April twenty nine.
Okay.
At six thirty.
If, uh, if something doesn't rise, are you, if I, if I come on, like, if I do, well known teams, am I allowed to vote then too? Okay, okay.
Okay, so we have that set. So then our regular council meeting after that will be in May thirteenth. Um, where we could do the final rating. Is that correct? And so then the May twenty seventh would not be a committee of the whole, it would be another regular council meeting. Okay, is council in agreement with that?
Yes. Absolutely.
Motion due.
Uh, adjourn to post session?
Yep.
Okay. Move that section into similar to close sessions, although in bigger regard. Motion is carried.
Maybe request for recess.